Good evening. We'll call the council meeting here in City Hall, October 16th. Order please. Mike, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Thank you all, welcome. Thanks for being here. Our first order is roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Councilmember Randalls.
Present.
Councilmember Raymond.
Here.
Public participation is an item that we have. Is there anybody who would like to address the council? Either on an item, on the agenda, or off? Well, you can just fill it out and give it to the... Is this on an agenda item, or...
Yes.
Okay, we can hear it at the agenda time. Nobody wants to speak on an off-the-agenda item, so we'll move on. Presentations. We have a presentation tonight from Mr. Mark Sutick, the League of Cities, to make to Rocky Randalls for 30 years of service. Rocky?
I'm Mark Sutick with the Florida League of Cities. It's an honor and a pleasure for me to be here with you tonight. If I could ask Commissioner Randalls, please join me. I have a resolution recognizing his years of service to your great city. It's a particular pleasure for me to be here in person to do this for Rocky, who's been a friend of mine and the family for a very long time, for as long as he's been in office. He's been not only a good friend, but a strong supporter of the league, and I couldn't think of a more better representation for your city than Rocky Randalls. With your permission, I'd like to read this resolution now to him. This is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities Incorporated, honoring Rocky Randalls for 30 years of elected service and presenting him with the John Land Years of Service Award in recognition of his unselfish commitment to municipal leadership and governance. Whereas America's municipal governments have long relied upon the unselfish leadership of their citizens for local self-government, and Florida's municipal governments share the time-honored role as the level of government closest to the people. And whereas this reliance places extraordinary responsibilities upon citizen legislatures, municipal elected officials, who make significant sacrifices of their time and energies on behalf of their citizenry, often for little or no compensation, making this commitment a true labor of love. And whereas municipal leaders share, strive for excellence in the governance of their city, town, or village, and commit themselves to providing quality services, governing effectively, and working to improve the quality of life. And whereas the league has named its Years of Service Recognition in honor of John Land, the mayor of Apopka between the years 1949 and 2014... So you have about 25 more years to go, and you'll catch Mayor Land.
You'll be the chairman.
He was a leader whose dedication is unsurpassed at the national and state levels, modeled the way for decades of municipal leaders. And whereas several terms in office is a high compliment voters give to an official, and with those years of experience comes a strengthening of wisdom, discernment, and strong leadership skills that brings tremendous value to the municipal governments of Florida. Whereas Rocky Randalls has held office in the city of Cape Canaveral for 30 years and is recognized for this achievement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities Incorporated that Rocky Randalls is commended for his dedication to the city of Cape Canaveral, is hereby recognized as an outstanding public servant in Florida, adopted by the Board of Directors assembled 17th day of August 2018 in Hollywood, Florida. Gil Zephyr, President; Mike Sutick, Executive Director. Rocky, congratulations. If you'd like to say anything.
This is a lapel pin from yours. Oh, okay. Wow. Mayor, if you would allow me a few moments.
Three minutes, Rock.
See, I can't...I'm not going to take 30 years.
You go right ahead.
But I would like to give three particular credit to some individuals. And forgive me, but I'd like to look at the audience and tell you a little bit about how appreciative I am. I came here in 1980, I guess, as a postmaster. And in Cape Canaveral, moved the post office over in A-1A, but nevertheless, the point is, some way or another, I know Bob Hoag has been here for 40, 45 years. Bob, how many?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. I didn't mind telling his age. But you accepted me as who I was. I walked the streets with you as a letter carrier, gave you mail, talked to you, and got a little bit of your confidence. And I guess I need to speak to each one of you that are here, and to those that may be watching, and those that are hearing, because it's through you that I was successful. You listened to me, you took our advice, and that gets me to the second group of people, is the employees here in our city who give you their finest attention, and have for years. The second part of that would be the volunteer boards. I see some in the audience that was here when I got here. In fact, you were on the planning and zoning board, weren't you, Bob? With Mayor Hoag?
To the council.
Several people...Richard Thurm was our mayor during that, his wife Anne, lots of people, Joey Sullivan, who those of you who's in the school system recognize. It's a living work of everybody working together. So in addition to the residents, it says, okay, and we have term limits, you don't realize that, but our terms are up every three years. We only get a three-year term. And if you don't want us there, we don't come back, you can bet on that, because you don't vote us in. So we have three-year terms, and we have to run for office every three years. Lamar Russell on the boards, the people that give me some experience as planning and zoning. And the other group is the elected officials, because, and the attorney, staff. Without you, this city won't work as efficient as it does. There's been many of you. We used to have a wall, a plaque, a mayor's, we'd run out a wall. It's a good thing. Those are the two main things that contribute to, if there has been any success, the residents and the employees in the city council. And the third one, I'd like to look to my mentor, wherever he is. Mark, will you come up here? I have been involved with the League of Cities, served on our Board of Directors, and even helped them build a new building.
Absolutely. Nineteen eighty-five, around.
So it's been a while.
Yeah.
But in any event, the League of Cities has been our go-to person for everything that we need, from insurance, from medical insurance, from education. I believe two of us went to the annual convention, maybe three of you. Did you go, Mike? Three went down. It's three days of hard work, getting up early, listening, learning, listen to people, learning what the next agenda's going to be with the legislature, that what they're going to try to take away from us. If I could yield my third one minute to Mark, and tell us a little bit about the League of Cities, what they stand for, is what, 410 cities, 411?
Yeah, we're 411. I think we're just about to have a new city incorporate. We'll have 412 cities. And basically, just like the plaque says, we feel like we represent the government that's closest to the people. And so we try our best to make sure that the state really stays out of the city business, especially when it comes to an area of unfunded mandates. It's easy for the state to sit up there and say, "We think that the city should," but then not fund whatever that desire that they want to do is. And not all city...every city is separate and individual in its own needs. And so we have fought hard. We do do the insurance programs and other things that comes from being a member of the League of Cities that we're able to offer. But our main goal from the day that we started in 1927 was to lobby and to advocate on behalf of the cities of Florida, and it was true then, and it's even truer today. So that's our main goal, and it really takes the participation of the elected officials of the city to contact your legislatures, to come to Tallahassee during the session, and to talk to them and say, "We are the city of Cape Canaveral. We know what the city of Cape Canaveral needs, and we don't really need, you know, those people in Tallahassee judging and trying to decide for themselves what's best for y'all." And you've been very involved in that, and we really appreciate it, and appreciate your support.
Wow. Well, that's the words of wisdom from an 80-year-old, if there are any. The residents count, the volunteers and the agenda, the people that's on the volunteer board count, city council, and staff. So with those rolled up together, I think your city's going to be a success. With that, Mark? Thank you.
Rocky, congratulations again.
Mark, you're welcome to stay, but you probably got eight more places to be in the morning.
I've got the sports bar down the road.
Oh, God. You didn't need to say that.
This is yours, too.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
If I can get into the acting city manager and put that in your building over there.
That's the place.
Mark, is this a pen in here?
Yeah, that's your little pen.
Wow. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All righty, we'll move on to the next item, and we have a presentation by our District Two County Commissioner, Mr. Jim Marfield. Welcome, Jim.
Thank you.
You're getting credit, not me. I just show up.
Mayor Hoag, and council members, thank you for having me here. I thought it'd be appropriate to come give you all an update of where the county is and let you know how things are going with that. But first off, Rocky, I get this guy to say congratulations. I'm on different boards with Councilman Randalls on the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, where you do TPO. We've done a lot of things, get a lot of things through, and I got to tell you, I've never seen somebody with as much energy as you have. In fact, when I get to your level of maturity, I hope to be able to do that same thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Of course, my wife is here with me, says I will never grow up, so that's...
No, I don't.
But anyway, I just want to get together with you all and let you know, I really appreciate y'all's service, because I think we all understand what goes involved to be, what's involved when you work within a city as a council member, an elected official. And it's a lot to it. And my first foray into that, and I'll be leaving in about a little over 30 days, and as a commissioner, but it's been some of the best times of my life, too. It's really a service, and it's a calling to do what you do, and I really appreciate that. As far as the county goes, we just passed our budget, of course, as we all did, a little bit improvement in the budget. You will see some more roads, more with some of the roads getting paved. In our district, most of those roads that we have to deal with are Merritt Island and West Cocoa area, and those are pretty well being kept in shape. Prior to me, the previous county commissioner, he just hacked away at all of the roads based on priorities, and that's what I've done, too. So that's going good. One of the things we finally got done after four years in office is we got the property of Jetty Park, finally sold back to the Jetty Park. And that money was very, very careful what we were using that money for. It was about $862,000. That money is going into Beach Crossovers and Cherry Down Park. So you're going to see some things going along with that. In fact, we already...there's an RFP going out soon for design of some of that, and also an RFP for some of the construction. But that's where that's going. It's...we...I was very careful to make sure that in all the motions and everything, that's where it goes. So you'll see that with the beach improvements. We also have had some things happen with, as you've probably read about, with some ordinances. I pushed through the septic tank ordinance to put restrictions on that to where we can use high-efficiency septic tanks. It was up to me. I wish we could just abolish them, but state law doesn't allow us to do that. Hopefully, we'll get past a lot of this, and so we can really concentrate on what causes the issues in the lagoon and prevent things such as the runoff from septic tanks. So we're working to get through that. We've done some other things, too, with focusing on some of the traffic, a lot of things we're working on for Merritt Island. And there's a lot going on. So once...I'd like to see whoever comes into my place, I hope they'd still work with the cities like I've tried to do. It's important, because there's a lot of things we can partner with. I've done some partnering with...we've done some here, we've done some Cocoa and Rockledge. A lot of times, we have to pool our resources, and we can do a lot more with roads and drainage and sidewalks, a lot of things we can do together that really makes a big difference. And really, that's all I have. I do have a little gift for y'all. This is a coin, and I have to give a disclaimer here. This was done...these were made with my private money, my money. So it wasn't government money that went into these coins. But I'd like for each one of y'all to have this in recognition of what you do for this county. And I really, really appreciate the opportunity to serve y'all and serve my community. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey, Jim, thank you so much, and best of luck to you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The commissioner was being modest when he kind of skipped over Cape Canaveral. We've been one of his real true receivers of things, mainly being the Community Redevelopment Board. He fought hard for their...us, the county commission, and they wanted to do away with the Community Redevelopment Boards. Jim, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. That's been the mark of this building, and many things to come with what you and your three of your team...two of your teammates, three of you voted for it. Thank you so much. Our city appreciates that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have one presentation to the city from...we have a certificate of appreciation for the Finance Department for their excellence in financial reporting. John?
Do you know what this is all about?
We have a cover letter here for...get it out so we can...this is from the Government Finance Office, and it's to the city of Cape Canaveral. The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the city of Cape Canaveral by Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, GFOA. It is a comprehensive annual financial report, known as the CAFR. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individuals or department designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFR. The CAFR has been judged by the impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of folk disclosure. To clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and users groups to read the CAFR. This is something that shows basically the city's financial standing, reported by the department to these people on the audit, and this is an award that's pretty prestigious. John, this is to you and your group?
I'd like to bring the group up.
Bring the picture up.
I'd just like to say a couple words. This is a very prestigious award, and I just thank my finance staff for all the dedication, professionalism, and hard work that they put in every day. It makes...it is a pleasure, and for the finance director to say this, it is a pleasure to come to work every day and have a staff that's so dedicated and so trusted. The finances in this city are safe, they're in good standing, you could rest assured. And when we get audits that have virtually no write-ups, you know that you've got the best, hardest-working, honest people in Cape Canaveral. And you know what? Sure make...should make you want to sleep a lot easier at night. So thank you very much. Thank you to my finance staff, thank you to the city staff, and to everybody that supports us, and I'd like the staff to come up to be recognized. Thank you. And my staff is the Deputy Finance Director, Melinda User, Cheryl Palaio, my accounting tech, Ed Lawson, the procurement specialist for the whole city, and George Clary, our accountant. Thank you.
Counsel, we had a couple other things on the items, but item under presentations, the keeper of our beautiful is unable to be here, and also our applicant Barbara McPeak and the applicants. Is the other applicant here, or is it just Barbara won't be here?
They're here.
They're here, correct?
We've got a couple of them here, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah. I think it was just Barbara wouldn't be here. So we have the other people here. So we have two applicants, Timothy Bass and Larry Holmes. Would you like to come up, please? You can come up one at a time, or together. We'll take Tim first.
All right.
You need to talk to Mr. Attorney over there.
Oh, good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Good, thank you. All the...I just add one question for formality, all the information in the application is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Yes, sir. Okay. Then one super softball question. Explain to the council why you would like to serve on this board. Sure. Well, I think culture and leisure service is really one of the areas where the town develops its identity, something that all the townspeople can truly be appreciative of and respect, and something hopefully that brings in the tourists, you know, versus some of the other towns around here. This is where we establish our identity as a town, this is where we establish the spirit of the community, and I would love to be part of that.
Okay. Counsel? We can start down on the end, if you want. Angela?
I went to the Culture and Leisure Service Board, so I know everything about Timothy Bass. So I've already heard his wonderful presentation, and I'm very much supportive of Tim and his wife, who are really great for our community. Thank you, Tim and your wife.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also had the privilege of reading your...what you have said and why you want and why you accepted the job. I think the thought that I would leave with you, and you certainly have all the qualifications and the desire, is our volunteer boards is usually the first, I guess, the first thing that people see when they come to the community, because they're involved in some opportunity or something. So you're the meet and greet people before we get them. So put in a good appearance, I think you will, and just thank you for taking time to do this. Volunteers are what keeps us going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Tim, thank you so much for serving. Two thumbs up. I think you're going to be an incredible asset to the community. You and your wife are an example of servant leadership here. Thank you. It's like when I first met Lamar and Mary Russell, two Harbor Heights residents there, I said, "Man, that's a power couple. One's on the code enforcement board meeting..." board, and the other one's on planning and zoning, and it looks like you're the next generation coming through there. So thank you so much for stepping out and being a servant leader for us.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Tim, definitely thank you and your wife for the consummate citizens of Cape Canaveral. I remember seeing you when they...after the storm, I don't remember if it was Irma or Matthew, and you and your community helping clean up. I just want to take my hat off to you. If we have as many people like you that are actually out there in the pits, actually doing something, and actually serving our community, I just can't thank you enough. And I see you out there at other events, the beach cleanups and the sea oats restoration. So you're not just talking, you're actually out there doing everything you say you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You are, too.
I'd just like to welcome you aboard, Tim. I'm thankful for your time to come up and volunteer, and I do see you have served on some boards and on some government boards, and I'd like to welcome you. I know your wife serves on the planning and zoning board, and she does a nice job, so welcome. And like Councilmember Morrison said, you're the next team. Welcome aboard.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, we have Larry...Larry Holmes. He's not the Larry Holmes that I used to know.
No.
Larry, welcome. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All the information in your application is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, same question. Why would you like to serve on this board?
I believe there's a couple reasons I would like to serve on the board. I believe we live in a truly unique little part of the United States, with the Cape, the ocean, Banana River, the port. I don't think there's anywhere else in the United States that we have the assets, the natural assets, that this little community has. The other reason I like to serve on the board is I've worked a couple times with Gustavo. Gustavo is a positive, can-do person. I've approached him a couple times about things to do in the city, has always been, yes, we'd like to do that. The more we can do for the kids, the better we'll be. I would truly like to work with him.
Good. Angela, you go ahead and just start off.
As I said, I've met Larry, and I support him and welcome him, and I'm sure he'll be a great asset to our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I noticed that was your number-one choice and only your choice of the boards you wanted to work on. Is that because you're a Cocoa Beach school lacrosse coach?
Uh...
Probably.
Mostly, yes. I'm the head coach at Cocoa Beach High School for the lacrosse team, and I thought this would be a great way to expand the base of lacrosse, if I can get that in the Culture and Leisure Board, maybe get some after-school stuff going with lacrosse. Right now, we do Roosevelt Elementary School in Cocoa Beach. I volunteer in the afternoons on Mondays and Thursdays for a lacrosse club for kindergartners through sixth grade. We have 45 girls and boys out there. The head coach for the girls is with me also, she's at Roosevelt. I'd like to do that at Capeview and Freedom 7 Elementary School. It's a great little...this is the first year we've done it, so we're just kind of baby steps right now, but I'd like to do that.
What would it take to make your wish possible for Capeview?
A little more time for me and some more equipment, more sticks for the kids. We...it takes 20, 30 girl sticks, 20, 30 boy sticks, and that's about it. We spend about 55 minutes to an hour with the kids on the days we go out there. It's a way to bring the kids into the program and having them play before they get to the seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade level of the high school.
Does it take any spatial playing field or ground to play on?
We...for the little kids, no. We just carved out a little space in the backyard of the Roosevelt Elementary School. It's like, it's about this size right here, and we just have them run around in circles and pass and catch, and have a little tiny goal that we use. A normal goal for lacrosse is six feet by six feet, but I have a two-by-two that we get the kindergartners and the sixth graders...
Right.
Using those. And you... And you, all you really need is sticks at this point. We give them mouth guards and let them go. There's no contact involved at all. It's a non-contact sport at that age.
The recreation department's got a youth program for three, four, and five-year-olds for soccer.
Yeah.
Out there. I was just thinking, any way they could be merged, or different people, different game, but...
It's something to look into. As young as I can get them going, I'd like to get them going.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you for coming our way.
Hey, Larry, thank you so much for serving. You're one of the, you and your wife, Norine, were one of the first people I met when I moved to Cape Canaveral, and from day one, I've always looked up to you and thought that you were both just stewards of the community. You care. I believe your, your children have grown up here to a certain amount of time, is that right?
I had one son here for about a year and a half. He came to live with us, and the others are older, thirty-five and a little older. We moved here about eight years ago.
And I think you're either father-in-law or your parent lives here too on the...
Mother-in-law.
So, a unique, you know, perspective to Culture and Leisure Services, especially with multi-generational facility, is for all ages. And while you, I think you, you bring that perspective there, you take advantage of our recreation, the beach, which is kind of given to us, and, and I agree that Gustavo is an excellent and passionate leader for our community within that area, and you're going to bring a lot of strength to, to that, from being that, that fatherly role for our kids. And you've shared some stories with me about taking that role with the lacrosse kids and being that, that asset. I played sports my whole life, and I remember a lot of times, my coaches or my dads, and being that, that advocate and shedding that perspective on the board, I think is going to bring a lot of value, paired up with the right team of staff. So, thank you so much for serving, and I don't think you checked all the boxes because you're already on the library board, is that right?
Yes.
So, you went and checked...
I didn't check that? Did I miss it?
No, no, you've, it wouldn't make sense to check it. So, thank you for your, your dual service, and, and two thumbs up to you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, on your application, you put retired, but I don't know if a lot of people in the audience know that you're a retired pilot. And so, the point I'm trying to make is, you've traveled all over the world, and you basically picked our town of Cape Canaveral to live in, so I take my hat on just that alone. But I also, I definitely respect anybody that gives, I went to one of your training sessions, as a matter of fact, I took my grandkids out there, and anybody that gives their time without compensation to, to help our youth, I just can't say enough. And you're doing that at Cocoa Beach, and I know, not only are you at Cocoa Beach High, but you're taking our kids that are going, that live in Cape Canaveral, who actually go to Cape Canaveral, so you're training them also. So, I just want to thank you for all you do and all you will do. And thank you, Larry.
Thank you. I enjoy it thoroughly.
I'd just like to thank you for your service. You're already on the library board. And then, jumping onto the leisure board is another effort, and like Mike says, working with the children, I admire you for that. I think that's the future. So, you know, I look at the kids as our future. And I want to thank you for your service, and any time you, you give to us, we appreciate it very high. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to do this.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Larry. Yep. Okay. I think that does our presentations and all the other boys. We have a consent agenda. We have a revised item on the consent agenda, the item number three in your packet. There's a memo, it's just word changes, word smithing, we had some word changes, like the city was the grantor, St. John's would be the guarantee, permit would be participation agreement. Those were the revised words. Other than that, it's the same. That was given to you, I guess. I don't know if y'all had a chance to get to it. But we're looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move, I move that to approve the minutes for the September fourth, 2018 meeting.
Do you want to remove? Just a minute, Angela, we got somebody removed.
It's okay. Mr. Mayor, if, if we could just pull items three and four for brief discussion, please?
Three and four? Okay.
Three and...
Okay, then we'll look for, anybody else? Anybody in the audience would like to remove anything? Okay, we'll look for a motion for one, two, five, six, and seven then.
Uh, Mayor, I would move for approval of the consent items that were not pulled. That would be one, two, five, six, and seven for approval.
Okay, second?
Second.
Mr. Morrison. Item three.
Call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, call the roll, please, I'm sorry.
Mayor Pro-Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Yeah, four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Randles?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
Four.
Okay, now we move into the two items. Three.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One second, let me get to this in the packet. This is the, the conservation easement. I, I didn't support this last time, and asked for a delay, and the council, four to one, went forward with it, and really, I just wanted to address what I think, as, as time goes by, we, we continue to learn more. And I found very interesting about an opportunity to use biological controls. After researching what the University of Florida is doing here in the state of Florida, specifically to address the big problem to eradicate these invasive species, the Brazilian pepper trees, and to convert this really unusable public piece of property into, I think, what I can see, it'd be a very nice park. I'm excited about that. And so, I, I am for getting there, but I am for getting there in a, as the most sustainable way as possible. And I saw, I, I can see where we are, but are we a hundred percent there on sustainability in respect to how we're going to go about this? And, and the idea that came to mind was, if, if we can change our mindset for a second, and instead of moving forward to make this a park as soon as possible to use, could we make this a park as a research hub to, to use? So, change the trajectory, the path on how we get there. We've seen success with the air potatoes, I think they are, that we've seen the invasive vines growing all across the state. As kids, we used to collect those potatoes and, and, you know, play with them, and they've discovered a, a certain beetle that controls them where they come from in, in another country. And it has been very successful in the state of Florida in eradicating these. So, a biological solution to fix it, a sustainable solution, no chemicals. And today, we are, I believe, starting to see some advancements here on ways to get there. And I really want to just see if the council would be interested in possibly changing the path there, and considering, instead of eradicating in the methods that I see from a, a, a variety of ways, from cutting and removal, and really, that last word of using chemicals, and we say that, you know, these are appropriate methods. While they might be quote-unquote "legal," it doesn't necessarily mean it's the right way to go about it. The lagoon's in horrible shape, and if we can eliminate the things that we're putting in it, the pollution that we're putting in it, I think that would be the right foot forward. So, solutions are out there, we don't have them yet, but I think that we could potentially put Cape Canaveral on the map as a research hub to address an invasive species that haunts all of the state of Florida in a one-hundred percent sustainable way. So, those are my thoughts. I can't support it moving forward, but I would support it if we would take the biological controls. And I don't know how to get there, and I really want to listen to the council and get your thoughts back on that. So, thank you.
Right. It's what you're saying, Mr., or Councilman Morrison, you will support it. Is that what I heard, that you will support it?
I will, I would support a, a bio, if we could get the roundup out of the methods and those chemicals, I would, I would, I would support moving forward, yeah.
Did you say that UCF had a program, or University of Florida? Did you research that?
I, I, what I read was from the University of Florida.
Okay.
And I believe Florida Wildlife Game Commission, and I believe the EPA and the regulatory agencies are all involved in some really fascinating ways to fix it.
Did you check what the city horticulturists?
No, I, I just read roundup and chemicals, and, and I kind of stopped there.
All right. Thank you.
And did you check what the city horticulturists?
No, I didn't. But I didn't bring up the research. Thank you.
Oh, sure. Is, because if there is some information that I would know about, I'd love, but, yeah, it's more about council.
I understand.
Yeah.
Uh, all I know is what I've ever read on it or heard from, but I have never really gone into deep depth on looking at this, but I, I kind of don't like it polluting the river, but St. John's Water Management, to me, is the people that more or less know more about this than me, for sure. So, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Wes, I understand very thoroughly what you're saying, but I don't know as to, to just can the whole thing because of one thing that we're not too sure of, or I don't know what the other solution would be. I wish we had an Ambrosia beetle that liked pepper trees, that would be the answer, but we don't, so...
I agree with you, Mayor. St. John's River Authority, they're always out at Solana on the river, and they're constantly making certain, because I know that Doug has to give them the review every single year about the fertilizer, the companies that come to do the landscaping and everything. So, they're, they're very attentive, so I know that they do it. In fact, I think they're overprotective in many ways. Thank you.
I don't have anything to add, other than, I, I don't want to kill it just because of something that we don't know an answer to. They're, they're, they're making very small progress on, every time you turn around, there's somebody busting pepper trees somewhere. I don't know if they'll, personally, if it'll ever, ever end. I know when we had the invasion of Ambrosia beetles, killed every bay-leaf tree in the state of Florida almost. I don't know, but there's no answer for pepper trees, other than just keep going after them, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah, and, and I feel the same. I don't, I don't know either. I did see a wasp, I saw some other insects that they're experimenting, they've noticed some progress, and the barriers that they have to go through to get it to where they can qualify to release in the community, they're in pursuit of that. And, you know, what we do know is that as it sits today, in its, in its manner, is that causing more harm than what we're going to do to it? Is it, as it sits today, unharmed, while they're invasive, the wildlife that's there, the lagoon in its fragile state, when we come in there, and the methods, and I agree, the best methods under the St. John's Water Management Authority is going to approach in our staff, are we going to cause more, you know, negative externalities, more damage? That's, that's the thing. And, and I'm not saying kill it, I'm saying hold, and let's say, ask those authorities and our staff, is there a biological control? Is there a method that we can take to do this? That is, that is it. And I think that, you know, we do know, I do know what does not work. It's when we put those chemicals, glyphosate, into our lagoon, that is, that is, there's, that is a, you know, carcinogen, I mean, it is causing cancer, it's an issue, and, and I think that we can test and, and try to shed light on, look at what Cape Canaveral's doing, thinking outside the box, and to work through a challenge biologically. So, I'm with you. I, I, I see, I'm not here to say we have an answer, but I'm saying, the, the path we're going down now, I, I'm, I am for making a motion to delay thirty days till the next council meeting, two weeks, I, for an update, to say, can, could we direct staff, or whomever we think is best, or city manager think is best, to, to research some biological controls, then we can bring this back in a short time period and, and vote on it again. So, I guess my motion would be to table it.
Before we do, before you do that, I like that. I just, it was yesterday, I think it was, they're coming out with a big pepper bust along the causeway, there was a section of the causeway, I don't recall really where it was going to be. But my question to what you're starting to think, the line of your type of thinking is, why are they doing this along the causeway if it's right on the edge of the river? We're, we're in the same situation, I realize, the river is right adjacent to where we're working, but I, I, I don't know why they do it on the river. You're thinking on the lines, we shouldn't do it.
Everything has to be approved by the St. John's River Authority, so anything that they're doing has to be approved.
It's all under their control.
And they want to do it in a safe, responsible way, as far as I understand. I mean, they're very regulatory.
Well, I, I, if they weren't, if we were not following the regulations, we would have a different problem. I know they're following, but what, what I'm saying is, you see cities like this, Stewart, the city of Stewart, Florida, who just, not citywide, but their, for their properties, their parks and their rivers, they said, "We are not going to use glyphosate roundup on any of our maintenance, on any of our ball fields, any of our, anything, anything, especially along the river." You see the damage that's happening down there, and I don't, I agree, I know that they're following those directions, but again, just because it's allowed doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. We can, we can, as a city, I think, take a stance and exceed, raise the bar beyond what a state law allows us to do. That's what Home Rule's all about, is saying, the state allows us a baseline, but here we are, we can be a hub for the community. I think tons of funds could flood possibly to Cape Canaveral for research, to figure out what a great controlled environment right along the viable, uh, right along the waterways to address biological controls.
Right. Mr. Dickey wants to say something, but I know there's a, there's a timeline on this, so that was why we're hearing it again.
Yeah, that's really what I want to talk just a second about, is just kind of caution the council that we, we have negotiated agreement. The city is paying very little money for this to all occur. We're using other people's money, in particular, de, um, the mitigation money. And, you know, if we start veering too far off the path, I'm not sure what's going to happen to that funding. And so, these are important questions that we need to ask ourselves before we, we start wanting to get too cavalier about negotiated agreements at the eleventh hour. And that's really about it. I just, I just want to caution that. And I, I want to kind of piggyback on what Angela said as well. These are state regulatory agencies. You've got Water Management District, who deals with our precious natural res, our water resources. We've got DEP. I mean, these are not, these, these folks have quite a few scientists on their staffs. I've dealt with them enough to know, they, they don't play, they, they know what they're doing. So, I just want to caution the council that be very, just go into it with your eyes open. I mean, I, just be careful with these what-if scenarios that I hear being discussed. We have no clue where these what-if scenarios are going to go, and what it's going to cost the city in both resources and money, so that's all I have to say. Mayor, thank you.
Good.
My feeling is that we need to move forward on this, and I feel that it should have been done a long time ago, because I understand that we don't know what's there, and it could be something that is not a wonderful thing for our community. We don't know exactly what is in that area. I'm not just concerned about the Brazilian pepper trees, I'm talking about other things that need to be cleaned up. So, I think we need to move forward, so I'm very much in favor of that. Thank you.
Good.
And as I said, I feel confident in the water management, and I've heard many of the people speak, and I feel that they will not do any... and I feel that they will not do anything that's harmful for the environment or the lagoon. I think they're overprotective.
Mayor, did you have a motion on the floor?
No, uh, um, before we get into any motions, we have a, a, we have a person that was gonna, were you gonna speak on this, right? But let me, let me just finish with the council first. We have a person that wants to speak, well, we're through, so.
Okay, well, I, I certainly would like to hear.
No motions or anything yet, or any tables?
Some more information.
I'm sorry?
I'd certainly like to hear some more information, then I'll speak.
Okay, well, we, we've heard a lot, uh, from past and staff, I'm sure, is, uh, well up to speed on what, what is, uh, right to do and what's not right to do. Like I say, I'm not, no scientist by any means, but.
Well.
I'm willing to listen, but I don't wanna kill something that's, staff put a lot of time into, and I know that's been a lot of bad history in that place back there, uh, over the years, and it's just not coming to fruition to be able to do something with it. And you probably all know that too, Rock, so, you know what I'm saying, many years ago.
Then Mayor, I would like to speak for it, inasmuch as, uh, Jeff Ratliff and I have worked on that grant since the year two thousand and seven, on this grant to get that done, and we've, it's, we was awarded it there way back many, many years ago, and we kinda put it on hold. It was a match grant, where a Corps of Engineers is gonna pay sixty-five percent of the cost of clearing it and redoing it and replanning it, and we were gonna have to pay thirty-five percent. And, uh, the option that we have now is St. John's Water Management has come to us and said, "We would like to make a conservation easement out of that, we will take the responsibility of cleaning it up," and they're using mitigation funds from different contractors that wish to do some work and have to pay for it, and we will end up with a net out-of-pocket, no expense, for a seven-point-nine acre park that St. John's is willing to take care of, and, uh, uh, from the city's perspective, the city's able to restore the entire property segments one, two, and three out there without any cost to us. And, uh, I, I just don't see, uh, us, and certainly I appreciate Councilmember Morrison of speaking to, to, to lead if there's a possibility, but this is not the only place that pepper trees are grown in the state of Florida. It's not like if we don't do it here, they'll never find a cure. I mean, everybody's got pepper trees along their fence. So we aren't denying them from future opportunity to, uh, to continue their research, which may be many years away, or maybe sooner. This is an opportunity that's been given to us, uh, and re-selected with St. John's and the Corps of Engineers to completely redo that, the mobilization, clearcut it, and then selectively replant it. This is a turnkey operation, and I guess more important, we've been working on this back and forth for years, and now we're at the point that everybody says, "You got it, sign the paper, we'll take it over, we'll be responsible, and you'll have a park with a boardwalk on it." Uh, I guess I would urge us to consider all the work that's been done on it and go ahead, and there are other places to, to work on pepper bushes if somebody desires to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky.
I, I appreciate Councilman Morrison's, um, take on the, on the long point, but we're, and we're basically on the eleventh hour, and my take is that we've, we've known about this, and we knew that the chemicals were gonna, and what chemicals were gonna be used. I would think that he would have more information, um, to present to the board instead of saying that he heard Roundup was gonna be used, and that's why he wants to delay the, the whole project. Um, he's had plenty of time to do his research, and he basically hasn't presented anything but Roundup and a chemical, and no alternative except for a delay. I would think that the council should go ahead and move forward, um, time is of the essence, and I'm ready for a motion. I mean, I can't make a motion, but I think the mayor can.
I'm not gonna make a motion, um, I'd rather you guys do the motion. Sorry?
Yeah, and just to be clear, I brought up this when, before we signed the contract, Mayor Pro Tim Brown, I brought up, um, and Mr. Ratliff and I went back and forth, and I expressed my concern, and then the, I, I opposed it again last time, so. I've been consistent with this for a while, and I certainly don't wanna use, lose the grant funding and things like that, but it, it, nothing is cost-free. And this, this is gonna cost us, it's costing us time right now to talk about it, but certainly is a good deal, and I, and I wanna move forward, and if we could remove that method, if they clearcut them, if they could remove that one method alone, it would certainly make me more comfortable. And it, it might be a bad idea, but I also know that what we are doing right now, what we are saying yes to will put pollutants in our lagoon. This council, that is a fact, that is one hundred percent true.
You don't know that for sure, Wes, you're, you're stating something you can't back up, you can't say that's a fact.
If Roundup and Pathfinder is being.
Wes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the lady up that wants to talk, we're gonna get her, we're gonna get her. You're, you're making, you're making statements that you cannot back up with fact, you're saying it's a fact, you don't know that for sure. I don't know it for sure, so don't sit here and say it's a fact that we're gonna pollute that river.
The chemical glyphosate is.
You don't know that's gonna pollute the river, you don't know how they're gonna apply it, you don't know anything about what.
I've done my research on this, and there's some smart.
I'm gonna hear this lady right over here.
I, I don't appreciate you cutting me off, I was in, I was talking, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect.
I know.
If I say something's a fact, I, I think I'm in, I'm, I've done my research to say that.
Where's the research I said you done?
I'm happy to provide that.
Where's it at? Well, tell us about it, Mr. Brown asked you for it.
I, I've, I, it's like saying cigarettes are bad for you.
Mr. Brown asked you for the.
For the research, so I'll rest my case, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers.
Your name, please.
My name is Joya Massa, I'm a resident of Long Point Road, and I am a scientist, actually, I'm a biologist. Um, and I was the one that, uh, sent a short briefing note to you, I hope there are some facts in there that might be useful. I think I have some suggestions for creative ways to help mitigate Brazilian pepper in the rest of our community, and I hope you can think about those as well. But my other concern, as has been pointed out, is there were a lot of things dumped in this area for many, many years, and this is, this is actually very serious, you know, we, we have concerns of the chemicals that could be used in maintenance and in clearing this space, but also a concern is that we may have people entering and trying to remediate the space, removing trees, that could disrupt a lot of these chemicals or other materials that have been dumped there. I think this also poses a serious risk, both for, um, the workers themselves, which would raise some liability issues for the city, also for the lagoon, if, if things get broken open and dumped, and for the wildlife, which could then transport that all over, and perhaps risk jeopardize our pets and our children and, you know, other residents. So I just wanna urge the council, to urge whoever's entering the space to really proceed with caution, to do a very clear environmental, um, assessment, and to make sure that any workers are trained to recognize potentially hazardous materials, to have appropriate personal protective equipment, and, and to be just very cognizant that this is a very fragile ecosystem, so, thank you.
We have a contractor that is very, very astute in this, will be doing the job for us. Just, uh, if you have any concerns, you can speak with Mr. Dickey on it. Okay, yes, yes, Jeff. Jeff Ratliff?
Yes, um, St. John's requires that we do an environmental site assessment before we remove any trees, and in fact, our consultant is doing that at this time. So an environmental site assessment is being done.
Okay. Just, just for clarification, Jeff, we're talking about the participation agreement that the council approved, and its date is September twelfth. And, and the only thing the council is approving tonight is the conservation easement, and the participation agreement, I don't have it in front of me, but it requires the city, city council, right, to approve a conservation easement within a certain period of time?
Yes.
So by agreement, the council's under the, under the clock to approve the conservation agreement. With that said, Jeff, I know the agenda, it mentions chemicals, um, to be treated, treat, treat the invasive species after removal. However, the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the management plan just simply says, "Remove the invasive exotic species." Doesn't, doesn't, does it, it doesn't define the actual method.
I mean, chemicals are typically used.
Typically used, but.
However, we, we'll probably use them in this case too, but I know St. John's and DEP, they're looking at other chemicals other than Roundup.
But, but the method of removal and treatment is not set forth in the conservation easement, which the city council is considering this evening, correct?
Well, you may be correct there, yes.
And that the method of removal is, I don't even think is set forth in the participation agreement.
That's to be determined.
That's to be determined, so there is some flexibility in the future going forward.
Yes.
To use certain methods that are effective, safe, right? And that the city maintain this property in the long term, using whatever methods the, the, the city believes is acceptable, right?
Right. I mean, we're working with St. John's, we're working with DEP, we're working with Corps of Engineers, we're gonna take all the information we can get from all of these folks, and we're gonna do the best possible job we can on this. I mean, we're not just going out there blind.
Wrap it up, if you would, uh. Anybody else have anything?
I have nothing to add but perhaps a motion.
Okay, move a motion.
Mayor, then I would move for, uh, approval of granting a conservation easement to St. John's River Water Management District for a portion of the city-owned property at the western end of Long Point Road, and authorize the city manager to execute the deed of conservation easement and permanent access easement for the same.
I second it.
Uh, for the person taking the motion, I'm reading the very last section of our recommendation from the city.
Rocky, would you, would you put in your motion to, uh, recognize the memo that was given to us for the corrections on that motion? Because that does change some verbiage in this, the memo that you got dated August, I mean, uh, October the fifteenth.
That's what you just gave us, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's the same thing, only it has the wordsmithing on, uh, the city's the grantor, and the grantee, and so forth.
If I had read that, we just received it, I would've probably read that.
Yeah, that's these, but, but they just changed some, the city is the grantor, and St. John's is the grantee, and it's a participation agreement rather than a permit, that was the word changes in it.
I certainly would accept them to my motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Randalls and a second by Ms. Raymond. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
For.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Councilmember Morrison?
Against.
Councilmember Randalls?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Okay, we will go to item four.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, item four, um, this is to renew, or I'm sorry, to, um, the eleventh addendum provides, um, to extend the option for this agreement, professional services agreement, uh, for five additional one-year periods. Um, they, they've done a good job for us, so tonight we are giving that, and this is for black spray service, uh, fertilization, insect disease, weed control, and pest control services. You can probably take a guess where I'm going here with this, is again, just the, can we put into this contract, um, that, that glyphosate will not be used, that harmful chemicals will not be used, and test this for a one-year period? And if the weeds are haunting us so badly that we can't see each other, um, i- i- I, I'm willing to take that gamble, six months, three months, whatever, to test and to see how we can move forward, and it might be a handshake deal, but I, if, if the contract had specifically outlined that protection, we'd be good. I like pretty grass, but I also like a beautiful lagoon as well, and you can't have both, it's hard to have both, excuse me. And so for those reasons, I'm trying to work with the council to say, "Let's think outside the box for a second, and let's see if Blacks is willing to come back, if they need to do a price adjustment, and that price goes up a little bit, with respect to the RFP process, or whatever the process is, i- it would be worth it to me to know that, again, we're leading by example and saying Cape Canaveral launches a one-year program of, uh, you know, no Roundup, glyphosate free, whatever it is, to, and, and, and to experiment on how, how we do, so, uh, how we handle those parks and the maintenance." That's the proposal that I'd like to put in front of council today, and, uh, if Blacks is willing to do it and try, and, and we need to hear their feedback, um, I think, I think we could be off to a good start. Many other cities, again, in the state of Florida are making this decision today to do this. And I'm talking about a citywide ban, I'm talking about what the, how the public takes care of their, our properties. So that is maybe, yeah, that's, that's where I am, and we don't have to spend a lot of time here, I mean, we kinda get two birds with one stone on the same concern on the last one, but it is different, this is a, a one-year contract. And I do have one question, when it says that the parties shall have the option to extend mutually, Anthony, could you help me understand? Is that, is that a mutual agreement to extend?
Yeah, parties.
Got it, okay, so that, that's very good, um, and that's it. Uh, council, the question is to, to conclude, um, would we be willing to see if Blacks could come back and propose putting together a chemical-free plan, um, to maintain, uh, our, 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 our facilities, our properties, fertilization, pest control, weed control, those types of things. Uh, i- if you can only do part of it, that'd be good, um, and I saw all the, the different methods, but I didn't see the specific chemicals and herbicides, so, thank you.
I'm not too sure, um, Wes, what you're really, I know what you're saying, but when, when the fertilizer ordinances were enacted a couple of years ago, uh, everybody's using lactate, uh, free supposedly chemicals for fertilizing, no more nitrogen, no more phosphorus. Uh, the weed control people probably will be, would be more apt to answer the questions, what you're asking to do, whether they do that already or not, I don't know.
I have spoken to the Blacks people, the Black spray people, 'cause we use them, and I've spoken to them a few times about this, and they are using approved items to do fertilizing and.
They're required to do.
They have to, they have to, it is required, you're right.
It's been, we've enacted it, like, two or three years ago, we enacted this.
The EPA is very strict, and because we are along the Banana River, and because of where we're at with the ocean, they have to be approved items, so, anybody know, Jeff?
Mr. Mayor, I may, I'm not arguing that we're, we're doing something illegal.
No, no.
I'm saying we are raising the bar, um, that, it would, that wouldn't even be a discussion today, of course.
Well, let me, let me say, raising the bar, you might be wanting to raise the bar where you can't raise the bar, because there's only so many different types of products that are on the market. You go to Home Depot and look and see what they have during a certain time of year, and then look at, to see what they got at another certain time of the year that you're only allowed to use. I don't know where you wanna raise the bar to, other than just say, "Don't do anymore, uh, don't do any more, uh, lawn fertilizing," or, what are you asking for, really, what are you?
That, that'd be a good start, yeah. If, if, let's test six months of no, no.
They already use what they're only allowed to use, they don't just go out there and throw twenty-six phosphorus all over the place out here, they, they use what they're allowed to use, they're already controlled.
What they're allowed to use can still cause damage, that's, that's the point.
I don't agree with that, 'cause that was all, that was all settled by a lot of people, other than you and I, about what causes the damage and what doesn't cause, 'cause I sat through many, many months of listening and hearings of the county, of the, the League of Cities, talking about what you're exactly talking about.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Um, I think Wes makes a good point, but I would suggest to keep things rolling and keep things moving, that if the council would like to go ahead and approve this, um, um, addendum this evening, we certainly can have a conversation with Blacks to see if there's any alternative, um, options or options that the, that the council could consider. We could bring it, if there is, and if it's a proven, a proven, um, technique or approach, we could bring that, and, and if there's a change order that would affect the price, we could bring that back to the council, but, uh, our. we could bring that back to the council. But, uh, our recommendation is, let's move forward with it this evening, and we will have that conversation with Blacks to see what options are out there.
That, thank you. If I'm the only one against this, I would fully support that.
I'll support that, I don't have a problem with that. But I'm just saying, I don't know where you wanna-
That's a step in the right direction.
Where you wanna raise the bar, I don't know where they can raise it.
Again, the, the chemical glyphosate is, is going in those products, and it's, it's not, it's, it's worth a test, so thank you.
If you, if you would agree to that, we'll go ahead and-
Yep.
Go for a motion, and then Mr. Dickey can bring the information back again.
I'll make a motion to approve the eleventh addendum to professional services agreement for fertilization, insect disease, weed control, and pest control services in the amount of forty-eight thousand fifty-four dollars with Black Spray Service Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute same.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Morrison and a second by Councilmember Raymond. You call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Rendles?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Okay, that concludes our consent agenda, and we're gonna go into public hearings. Ordinants ten to eighteen, first reading.
Okay, ordinance, uh, ten dash twenty-eighteen, ado-, um, ado-, oh, an ordinance of the city of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, adopting amendments to the annual general fund, special revenue funds, agency fund, capital project funds, enterprise funds, and enterprise capital fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-seventeen, and ending September thirty, twenty-eighteen, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, and an effective date, uh, this is, um, first reading of this ordinance, also a public hearing item. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, what we have is just some budget transfers back from the last year's budget. Um, David, do you wanna do this, or?
Um-
Just kinda give us an overview of it, or John?
I would suggest-
House client, John?
I was-
Good.
Yeah, this is, it's the end of the fiscal year. Uh, we've come to September thirty of two thousand eighteen, and simply now it's time, we're, this is simply comparing our, uh, ending, uh, our budget, ending funding balances compared to our budget. And what it shows is where we started, the adjustments we made, the transfers, and where we ended up. It's, it's that basic, and what this does is this sets the stage, because now, when we approve this ordinance, and we go to the second ordinance in November, that'll take into account any of those invoices that, for work that's been done prior to one October, that will close out, will close out the books completely then, and then you'll see what our, we actually ended up with our actuals compared to our budget. And, and these balances you see below are nothing more than saying, here's what our revenues were, here's what we expended, and this is what's basically left in each fund. And this is done every year. When this is, when the second part of this is completed, and here's where we are now, and when you notice, when we do this in thirty more days at the next council, uh, meeting, you'll see that, um, the final adjustments will be made, these numbers may change a bit, and then when the, the auditors come in here in December-
Go ahead.
They will roll this all together, and that's what you'll see in the audit report, the audit report of which the mayor just, uh, the excellence award of which the mayor just approved for the twenty-third year, straight year in a row, uh, that the books are straight, and the finance staff is doing things exactly the way they have to. So this is basically honing up the books and, um, closing out the year. It's, it's that simple. We're rolling up the numbers, we see what came in, what we spent, what's left, and making sure that every invoice, every PO is, uh, closed and balanced accordingly. It's, it's that basic.
Thank you. Uh, all I have to say is, it's, uh, it's quite a bit of money, it's leftover, it's good. Of course, that'll be changing at the end of the budget, like you said, but, you got, anybody, uh?
No, I, I certainly move, and I understand it, and just for the benefit of perhaps of people that maybe aren't familiar with the accounting system of cities, we made our budget a year ago in June, last, not this past year, a year ago for this past year, for the year eighteen. A budget is simply the estimate of what you expect you're going to spend, and what you expect you're gonna get in the way of revenue, of which we, as a city, do not know. Uh, looking through this, just, uh, local option gas tax come in sixty-two thousand dollars less than we had estimated. Well, maybe people didn't drive as much, maybe we didn't get as many visitors. We may have had a couple extra expenses that we didn't anticipate because a sewer line broke. So, when we make the budget, which was June of seventeen, for this past year that ended, and, and it takes effect Sep- September to October, it ended the last of September, there may be some changes, just like your outstanding checks, you may not have what's in the bank, because there's an outstanding check. We may owe some people, people may owe us some, there's some bills to come in, maybe we didn't get everything done that we wanted, so that project didn't get paid. So it's a simple matter of, uh, uh, making these adjustment, budget adjustments to what is actually, and the closing part will be in November, where we actually pick up, close out every action of going back and forth. So, uh, there are some estimates there, uh, we didn't get all the income that we thought, uh, we didn't spend the Long Point money that we was anticipating, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. That didn't get spent, so it's still there. So, uh, lots of things, but it's a simple matter. If, if there's no questions, Mayor, I certainly would move for approval of ordinance number ten, dash twenty-eight, and this is the first reading of this ordinance. It'll have one more hearing.
I'll second it.
Anybody have anything they wanna add?
Only, only thing I wanna say, John, have we got all our FEMA money, or what do we still owed approximately, real quick?
Hurricane Matthew, the city's got all- Let me- Hurricane Matthew, the city's- The- We had about eighty-eight thousand coming in, I think we got eighty-five-five, something like that. Okay, for Irma, this is a long process. The city has submitted everything it's required to submit to the FEMA rep, FEMA has sent our information to the board that approves what the FEMA reps sent on behalf of the city, and then when that's approved, that goes to the state, and then the state will determine when it will release the money. So I could safely say here with confidence that our claim is in, but it's probably gonna be a year at least before the state starts giving us our money for Irma. And thank God we did not have another hurricane.
It's not over yet, John.
I hate to say that too prematurely, but I'm confident, I'm confident.
Got November to go through. Okay, um, before we vote, we need to go to public on this. Um, public, anybody wanna talk about what we're talking about? All we're doing is we're transferring last year's leftover monies back into the general fund, and into a couple of, uh, other transfers that we're making, and then at the end of this cycle, it'll be down, the numbers will go down a little bit, but I don't think much were there. Good job, all I can say is, good job to the finance company and John and his crew. Thank you, John, for a good budget. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rendles-
Yes.
Second by Angela, was it? Uh, on item twenty, or, I'm sorry, I gotta get my glasses on, it's twenty-eighteen, it's, or, it is ten, twenty-eighteen, the finance.
And Mayor, the public hearing is closed.
The public hearing is closed, too. Everybody ready? Call the motion.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Four.
Mayor Hoag?
Four.
Councilmember Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Rendles?
For the motion.
Councilmember Raymond?
For.
Okay, we have two other items, or informational items, as y'all, look at them, if you have any questions. It's a memorandum agreement between Brevard County and Emergency Management Office and the City of Cape Canaveral to join the alert Florida. Uh, we're gonna do away with the, uh, the system that we have, Join Hands. Josh, do you-
Join Hands, Join Hands is the perfect way to put it, we're not doing away with it, it'll still be the same keywords, you can still text three-two-nine-two-zero to triple-eight, triple-seven, get the same alerts, same keywords, we're just able to take that forty-eight fifty, put it back into the general fund, and, I mean, honestly, we're not gonna see a difference, as far as what we do on our side and what the citizens see. There's just, you know, a bigger system, more capabilities, and that money comes back to us.
Okay. Anybody have anything they wanna ask on this, or, you understand what we're doing?
Just a point of clarification, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Some of the people from Puerto del Rio came in a little late after we, they had item number seven, and, uh, we had passed that in the consent agenda item, and they may have come in after we got the, they didn't think we'd be this far along this quick, so, item number seven, which was, uh-
We didn't let you talk too much, that's why we got where we're at.
I can take a hint.
No, if they wanna say, we're, we're gonna go to the public in a minute. Uh, let's just finish our agenda, and then we'll get into. Okay, our other, other item of interest down there is the free public internet access that we have here at the council chambers. You can go on to the, uh, what, the Wi-Fi here right in the chambers, this Cape Canaveral's guest passcode is thirty-five P number zero Y A. That's the passcode for the, uh, internet here in, in the city hall. If anybody's interested. That was Mr. Morley's.
And from time to time, that passcode will change, but we'll keep it posted out in the lobby out there at each meeting.
Thank you, Todd. Okay, we have reports. Uh, Rocky, you wanted to bring something up about Puerto del Rio, was that?
Uh, only that, I noticed some of the board members came in a few minutes late, and we had already heard that item number seven, and it did pass.
Okay, well, what true, oh, oh, you hate that, pardon. All right, okay, council reports, Angela, let us start down there with you.
All right, ready to go. I have decided that September and October are both very, very busy months, and, uh, the city has kept me busy representing them. Uh, October sixth, I went to Dr. Ross McClooney, who lives over on Johnson, and he talked about the election twenty-eighteen and climate change, that was at the library, very interesting program on a Saturday morning, and, uh, I got a lot out of it, and he is a scientist, and I thought it was very interesting. And I think that this is something that, if anyone's interested, you can, uh, use this website, it's a shortcut to voter preparation, but it has to do with climate change, so if anyone's interested, you can talk to Dr. McClooney anytime, and you can check out this website. Another thing, October eighth, I went to the Space Coast League of Cities Board of Directors meeting, and we do have the scholarship ready, the application for the scholarship, and I'm hoping that someone in Cape Canaveral is the recipient of this two thousand five hundred dollars. However, we are not going to be awarding that in December, it will be awarded to someone in March. So, anyone that you know that would like to apply for a scholarship, uh, you can look at the website, and it's all right there, and if you have any questions about this, just ask me, and I'm glad to give you that information. Uh, as far as, oh, we, we heard something about the cost, this is rather interesting. The Florida League of Mayors met, and the mayor of Sanibel has spent three million dollars picking up dead fish after the red tide. I thought this was just an amazing little fact to have. Uh, tonight's news also said something about red tide, they are testing right out here on our shores. I think that's something we all need to be aware of and keep our eye on. I also went to the membership meeting, along with the mayor, and, um, we had the speaker from the TPO, Georgiana Gillette, and that was very interesting, I learned all about that, and Rocky will probably tell you more about it. Uh, in addition, uh, at that point, and also at the Board of Directors, I learned about Senator Euclid's office, they were going to be reporting that the student financial literacy bill passed the Senate floor, this was something that I heard about the first time there, but it has passed. This is, uh, financial literacy, and all students will be required to take this half-credit of financial literacy. What they found is many of our students did not know how to write a check, and I can attest to this, my work at Saint Vincent de Paul has been very interesting, realizing that people are even in their eighties, and they don't understand what it means to have a family budget. And, uh, I'm very happy about this, because students will be required to learn how to take care of financial responsibility. This is important for all of us in this community. In addition, I would like to say, uh, things that are coming up. October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, at Man-, uh, we have the Space Coast Art Festival at Manatee Sanctuary Park, and there are volunteer forums available. I will be there volunteering, I don't know what I'm going to do, but I am volunteering for several hours on Saturday.
Parking cars.
Oh, my goodness, I hope not. Anyway, the next thing, please, don't even bring that up, Rocky. The next thing, October twenty-ninth, we are going to have the City of Cape Canaveral mayoral candidates forum at our library, and it should be between six and seven-thirty. Uh, I am promoting this, and also it's now being sponsored by the League of Women Voters. Sorry about the late date, it was the only thing available, it's very close, and many people will have already voted, but I think it's important, it shows us what democracy is all about, and we have one young man that, uh, not many people in the city know, so he is running, and I think it's a great experience for him to tell us about himself. And ho- hopefully you will attend. These you will see around town, and it will probably be on our website. Thank you. Now, last but not least, oh, excuse me, I forgot to tell you about Trunk or Treat, that's going to be at the rec center, October twenty-sixth. You can bring your vehicle, decorate it, hopefully, you can even come in costume, and you can give out candy to the children in a safe environment.
Councilmember Raymond, that involves pre-registration, so-
Oh, that's right.
And it's, and it's full, yes.
Sorry about that, I did not know that-
If you have a child, bring a child, but don't just show up with your car.
Thank you, but I'm al- I'm already registered, not a problem. All right, now, tonight, since it's Rocky Rendles' night, he is the subject of my poetry, and I have a limerick for Rocky.
Lay it on me, I'm ready.
Here we go. There once was a mayor, Rendles, who wore a suit but no sandals. He loved to eat cake, but he didn't bake. On his birthday, count the candles.
Thank you. Oh, that is-
I just heard a-
I knew you would need to have a copy.
I heard you had a birthday party, Rocky.
Yeah, we could probably, what?
I heard you had a birthday party this, a couple days ago.
Oh, yeah, I did that, too. Yeah, that happens.
Word got around town.
Happy birthday to you.
Wow.
Happy birthday, dear Rocky. Happy birthday to you.
Wow.
Twenty-nine years old.
Thank you, it, it was, uh, it was held at a new restaurant, and I did get, uh, a cake with one candle on it, I guess that's because I'm eighty-one, I don't know, maybe we're starting over. But, uh, thank you, life is good. I had the occasion, uh, to be on, uh, some of the district or regional conferences. Department of Transportation asked me to sit in on their, uh, conference for Space Coast Area Transit. As you know, we get money from the federal government, Department of Transportation, to run our bus system, uh, throughout Brevard County, and, uh, our supervisor of, uh, Space Coast Area Transit got promoted to Assistant County Manager. He was the one that wrote the grants. The, uh, financial officer with Space Coast Area Transit took a job in Volusia County. So, they looked elsewhere, and I spent the day over there, I'm learning how to write grants. This is important, because we get our capital- This is important because we get our capital money from the Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation. That's, uh, seven, eight million dollars to buy the capital items for the buses. And for those that you may not realize, our buses run from about five-thirty in the morning until eleven-thirty at night because it takes two shifts of housekeeping for the hotels. People don't check out until it's ready to get on the ship, which may be one o'clock or two o'clock. And you can't rent a dirty room at three o'clock in the afternoon to a new person. So we run two shifts. So that's a big, uh, it's gonna be a big challenge. It's grants from the state, probably in the neighborhood of eight, eight million dollars. And I've got all the books, so I will proceed with that and, uh, hopefully do us justice because, uh, we've got a lot of people who need riding buses. Another meeting was, uh, the MPO Alliance was over in Orlando. That's what, uh, Commissioner Barfield mentioned about. We got the new, uh, priority projects, and just, uh, looking through this, there's many of them. Ellis Road, this is for about nine counties. Ellis Road widening is, widening down there, that's I ninety-five is number one. However, our five-twenty-eight turnpike is moved up to number five, and it's already funded. That's the important thing. Uh, we're widening two lanes to four, including a multi-use trail. Now, to me, that means that it's gonna be a bicycle trail or something along with that. It's gonna be underneath the bridges coming across, so I haven't seen it. But it's in the preliminary design situation. It's, uh, latest project is phased-funded. That's a good thing. There's several over here, uh, that are in our county, but, uh, they'll come their way. The other meeting I had the opportunity to go to, uh, and, uh, we have funding for those that are interested in the NASA, NASA causeway bridge. That's a bridge that goes across natural call, causeway, uh, right off of US one. It's, uh, functionally obsolete, which means that the people in, uh, Astrotect can't get their satellites over there anymore. So we've got, uh, the NASA bridge has been updated. Uh, we've got money coming from, uh, I guess Pentagon going to NASA to do the design. I've got the pictures of it, uh, kind of interesting because they're looking at several options. That's a little bridge that now has gates on it going to the space center. Uh, they're proposing three different types of bridges. One is going a permanent bridge, which is sixty-five feet high, which they don't understand that things don't go up over sixty-five feet in a short distance. You need long distance. And, but it, it is there, we got the money for it, and that's important to the people at Astrotect that has to take their projects across. So moving on, thank you for being here. Thanks for the birthday.
Yes, happy birthday. Just a quick update, um, received a fantastic tour of our Public Works Department, thanks to Deborah and Josh and the staff there who did that. Awesome experience, uh, and a good refresher from the last time me and Jeff Ratliff did it, no, I think five years ago. And, um, I'm looking forward to what's to come there, so very, uh, uh, as exciting as you can imagine Public Works can be, we got it going on here. Uh, so, the next thing, uh, yes, uh, the, uh, looking forward to the trunk-or-treat, uh, that's exciting. Friday Fest, this past one was an absolute hit. It, I mean, everything lined up, weather was perfect, music was jamming, and it was a, I just remembered being very present in that moment and saying, "We have such an amazing city and staff who put that together." It was one of the best ones, well-attended, I've ever seen, and those continue to grow, weather permitting. So, uh, keep up the great work there. And, uh, the survey is out. Just complete hats off to the staff who worked really hard, uh, for that. I know we accepted the survey. Many of you might have participated and spoke up, uh, for that survey. Uh, all the raw data is online and a, a really, uh, well-done report that, uh, I've read through a couple of times, and I'm learning so much about what's important to our city. So, thank you so much for everyone who was a part of that and making that happen. The, um, went to the Marine Resources Council, uh, and learned a lot from, uh, Dr. De Soto, and, and got the, uh, the report out, which I dropped several of them off at city hall. I can drop some more off at the library, and I think I got a few in the back of my car. Uh, these are, also, they're online, you can download them. Uh, and this is one of the first, uh, the science has been out, but what they did is they put together a very comprehensive benchmarking, uh, on five indicators. Scientists came together, and, uh, Dr. Soto explained how they took the five things from number one, and most importantly, seagrass. Uh, number two, phosphorus. Uh, three, nitrogen. Four, chlorophyll. And five, turbidity, turbidity, uh, fancy word for water clarity. And, uh, they said, "Let's measure these." And old quote I always live by is if it can't be measured, it can't be managed. Now we have something that we can talk about. We got a centerpiece, and you see where we scored low? And you, now, next year, when this comes out, uh, we'll have, we can actually track improvement. So I'm looking forward to it. Very happy about the progress we're making in Cape Canaveral. And I hope that other cities do jump on board, as we've expressed up here in council, uh, with, that, that we're responsible for this riverfront, so we can watch these scores go up. They ordered twenty thousand of these. So if you live in a condo, and you're here, and you've already got your hands on one, pass them out, and let's start talking about it and, and sharing that information with one another. So, big thanks to the Marine Resources Council. They're, and they're also focusing on three major things that you can do right now. Uh, rain barrels, you can put those, if you have a home, that you can do it, that captures thousands of gallons of water a year to stop that water from going into our lagoon. Uh, and then mangrove planting, uh, and, uh, oyster bed planting. So if you have a condo and you got a dock, or if you, we've got opportunities to, to invest your time. Uh, they've got all the resources lined up. They do, uh, receive most of their funds through private, uh, funding and collaborate, uh, all across the county to get a lot of the things that we need to do to get our lagoon healthy. Uh, the, uh, on a Saturday note, the Hurricane Michael has hit. We know, uh, an absolute devastation, so my thoughts and prayers go out to that community and, um, all the, the, the communities that were impacted in the Panhandle and tying in. Uh, big thanks to John Price for coming here at the last council meeting and speaking up about the Pink Ribbon Walk. It is, uh, Breast Cancer Month, um, and we are trying to, 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 to make that an awareness piece. And the walk raised some money. It was a good event out of the port, uh, out of the Port Canaveral. And, uh, a lot of folks got to, to be a part of that and, and raise money for a good cause. And in respect to breast cancer, um, our state senator and a dear friend of mine, Senator Euclid, um, passed away earlier this month. She was your senator, and many of you, uh, did not probably know her because we had a redistricting, and, uh, it was no lack of effort on her part. She covers all the way from Volusia down, uh, right to, to the Cocoa Beach area. And what a, a, a spirit and, and a, a person with fierceness, uh, where she would, you know, tenacious persistence to get things done, to be effective, like, such as the financial literacy that you heard, uh, Councilmember Raymond talk about, very important. Uh, but a true lover, a true, a servant who, uh, got a lot of things done for the community. And, uh, she will be missed, uh, in, in, cancer strikes, it's sad, but, um, her legacy will go on. And some, one of the things, when I got a chance to meet her, was she said that, um, she just loved helping people. She was a local champion for home rules. She started off in city government, uh, working at, uh, at the Ponte Enlet. She moved on to Port Orange, served as vice mayor, and then was elected as the mayor. She, she served in the, uh, the Florida House and Florida Senate. So, um, thoughts and prayers go out to her. She will be missed, uh, but we will remember that her legacy of helping others will be carried on as everyone up here, and as we heard all the servants do every single day. So with that, uh, thank you.
Okay, I want first to congratulate the Financial Service Department and your team, John, on the excellent job they're doing. Also, I also noticed, I don't know about everybody else, but community involvement is, is way up, whether it be Friday Fest. I was at the movie in, in the park this past week, and there are probably a hundred parents and kids out there, probably even more than that. So I just wanna thank the city for what they're doing to get the word out. Our local, I'm assisting coaching our local Cape Canaveral Little League team. In our first game, we lost fifteen to nothing. But, hey, it's all about improvement. Our next game, we lost fourteen to six. So the kids are definitely getting better, and they're all having a good time. And y'all get a chance, come out there and support us. But I just wanna thank everybody. Everybody be safe, and I look forward to the next meeting.
I, I just wanted to pass my congratulations on to John and his crew. Uh, they're, they're, they're doing a great job for our city. The financial department is, is on top of it. And I'd also like to, uh, extend my thanks to Gus for the job he's doing in the rec department. I think we have a tremendous recreation program in the city, and it, it's gonna get bigger. And I think that lacrosse might be something that this town might wanna take a look at. We got room for that, so I would like to see that come into the city. Anything, especially at the grade school, if we could get it in. Mike, you got a little drag up there, you might be able to help us out with that. But I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and, and I know Commander Barros wants to speak. And then anybody, your thoughts, you'll get a chance to say something before we close tonight. But Commander, the floor is yours. And then we'll go down to the legal staff down here.
Thank you, sir. Just, uh, just about thirty or forty-five minutes is all I need of your time tonight.
Next meeting.
At least we can all laugh, right, at the very end? No, just want a couple minutes of your time. I know we've already talked about trunk-or-treat and how safe and community-oriented that is for our children in our community. So please encourage those citizens that you know, friends, family, neighbors, to come out and enjoy that event. However, if they do choose to trick-or-treat on Halloween, again, encourage them to be very safe, have visible clothing on, and hopefully go with their children while they're trick-or-treating, and not just send them out into the community because, um, it's sometimes a very unsafe night for our children in our entire county, and we certainly don't want that to happen in our community. Nothing sadder than what we have to respond to is if a little one gets hurt out in the community. The other thing that I'd like to, um, mention is, before the next council meeting, because it will be too late then, we do supporting, um, those needy residents within our own community. Both Fire Rescue and Brevard County Sheriff's Office partner together to serve Thanksgiving meals to those families. We don't always get what we need as far as names of those in your community because some people don't like reaching out for that support and help. But a lot of you know those people in your communities. So I ask that everyone that is here tonight watching and listening, that if you have someone that you know in your community might not ever reach out for help, if you can just send an email to canaveralprecinct@bcsou.us, or go to our website, or the city's website, you can certainly find me. And send us an email with their name and their information, and we will ensure that we enroll them and that we provide them a meal for Thanksgiving. And last but not least is, tonight we heard from, obviously, Mr. Bass and Mr. Holmes that are coming to a volunteer board. But if you're not able to do that and take a lot of time, obviously, partnership doesn't always require you to spend a lot of your time and energy. So we always ask for the partnership in the community to keep our community safe. So I'll keep encouraging our citizens. If you see something, say something. If somebody looks a little odd near your neighbor's house, call then. Because I will tell you, over the last month or so, I've gotten some calls. Three weeks ago, I had this individual, and, well, three weeks ago, there's nothing I can really do today. And then they get upset that I didn't do anything three weeks ago, and then we have to ask, "Did you call?" Well, no. My crystal ball doesn't work very well out here. Maybe it's, I don't know, cell signal, I'm not quite sure why it's not working. But again, I just really encourage that partnership. We've got a great community, um, we respond very quickly in our community, which is really great because of how small we are. But sometimes we're not everywhere, and we can't see everything. So even though you might not be able to spend a lot of time on a volunteer board or something like that, just know that your partnership within our community, calling the sheriff's office and letting us deal with problems, um, even though you might not realize, it's really important. Because that potential individual maybe has done something else in our community, and now we're putting all the pieces together. And your one little jigsaw piece puts our entire puzzle together. So continue that partnership with us. And again, if you have anyone that can really be using for, um, Thanksgiving, please forward me that information so that we can be sure to serve our community. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Like to personally thank you and your Green Squad for all you do for the city. And, and to believe me, they do a lot. Uh, you, just look at the weekly report sometimes, and you see they're very active. Thank you again, and be safe. Thanks. Report? Okay, anybody have anything they wanna say? Any... Yes, uh, Danny, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Danny Ringdahl, developer for Puerto del Rio. I'm sorry I missed the, uh, approval tonight for the roadway. But I just wanted to take and tell you personally, I know the amount of work that the staff put on this for, for many years now. Also, the legal, uh, council for the city, the commission, the mayors. Um, it's been a very long, convoluted, uh, path to get this. And also, I wanna say that the city manager, David Green, he and I discussed this many, many years ago. But it was mutually agreed that it was the right thing to do for that particular condo project and also the public for the use of the park out there. So, again, I personally appreciate that, and it was nice to see that it went full circle. So, thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Thank you. Okay, if nobody has anything else? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.